Let's go.
Mr. Clerk, I will call a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Electronic roll call is starting now.
Okay, thank you. We have quorum declarations of pecuniary interest. Okay, seeing none in the room and none online. There are no statutory public meetings. I do want to remind council, today is Day of Pink. Communities across the world unite in celebrating diversity and raising awareness to stop homophobic, transphobic, and all forms of bullying. Presentations, we have a number of them. Our first presentation is by Ms. Jenny Demanuel, Director of Corporate Infrastructure and Strategic Business Services. And I'm going to try this, but I'm going to Jacek Sohatski. And please correct me.
Yes.
Yes, it's Jacek Sohatski. You can call me Jock, it's easier.
Jocko?
Jock.
Jock, okay, thank you. And project manager, assist management, planning, and sustainability. Mr. Manuel, when you're ready, please start.
Thank you, Chair Henry. Good morning, members of committee, colleagues, and those watching remotely. My name is Jenny Demanuel. I'm the Director of Corporate Infrastructure and Strategic Business Services in the Region's Works Department. And I'm very happy to be presenting to you this introduction to the DURM standard, which, as proposed, would become the region's standard for all regional facility construction. So there are many building standards available, and they're designed to achieve specific building performance goals, such as LEED, ASHRAE, and WELL. And while some aspects of these standards have been implemented on a case-by-case basis as part of regional facility construction, the region's standard approach has been to construct facilities to meet the Ontario Building Code and the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities standards. These are the minimum standards that any facility must meet. Regional facilities have also been constructed to achieve LEED Silver equivalency, but full certification has only been completed where required by funding applications. There are no standards for amenities such as all-gender or multi-faith reflection space. This means we have facilities with varying features, performance, and resulting in different occupancy and visitor experiences between regional facilities. Recognizing this, a cross-departmental team of staff worked to develop a consistent minimum criterion for the design, construction, expansion, and renovation of regional buildings that reflects measures and performance targets that are aligned with the strategic plan. The DURM standard supports greater alignment between the objectives of the DURM Region Strategic Plan and the design, construction, and ongoing asset management of regional facilities. It has been developed to create welcoming facilities that support our diverse community and workforce, facilities that minimize environmental impacts, and workspaces that are modern and flexible to adapt to changing ways of working in a fiscally responsible way. The standard acknowledges the diverse types and scales of building construction projects that the region manages and adopts a performance-based approach to building design and construction. Performance areas range from accessibility and inclusivity to space optimization in office areas, and sustainability and resilience, including energy efficiency and greenhouse gas emission reductions, along with ecological health. A multidisciplinary, cross-departmental team of staff, supported by Purpose Building Incorporated, a third-party consultant, collaborated to develop the DURM Standard Version 1. The Works Department's Facilities Design, Construction, and Asset Management Division, or DCAM as we call them for short, led the process, partnering with staff from the Finance Department and the CAO's office, along with other divisions in the Works Department, to ensure the standard was comprehensive. The development of the standard was completed in three phases. Phase one involved reviewing existing regional standards and processes and summarizing key findings from that review. Phase two involved reviewing industry practices and standards, including local green building standards. Key findings were summarized and recommendations were made on which components of these standards should be incorporated into the DURM standard. And phase three was the development of the standard, which involved determining the outcomes the standard should achieve and creating the guidance documents, training materials, and tools necessary for staff to implement the standard. Along with the checklist developed, there are also a number of supporting technical documents to assist staff as they apply the standard to their projects. As noted in the previous slide, existing and sterile standards were referenced as the DURM standard was developed. As always, regional projects must comply with the Building Code and AODA legislation, along with any local design or green standards in place. The DURM standard, as our minimum standard, will result in buildings that exceed these requirements. Other standards referenced in the development of the DURM standard include the National Energy Code for Buildings, LEED, the Canadian Green Building Council Zero Carbon Building Standard, and the Mississauga Corporate Green Building Standard. I'll now pass the presentation to Jack, who will speak to the standard in a little more detail.
Thank you. So the standard will apply to all regional facilities and all currently leased facilities to the extent possible, in accordance with the lease agreements that we have currently signed with them. As the DURM standard matures, it will inform the criteria for future leases and to be considered where feasible as well. Designs for all new facilities, construction projects, and certain renovations projects must comply with the DURM standard. As the extent of renovation projects varies, the criteria was set to determine the standard would be, when the standard would be applicable. So there's two major criteria. So one is a project value of 25% of the, or more of the building's planned capital projects within the next 10 years, as well as project value of 15% of the building planned capital, or beyond the 10-year horizon. Let me go to the next. Okay, so how does this really work? So there is a series of design checklists that are tailored to each project and contain targets for each project design must meet in major spheres of accessibility, inclusivity, space optimization, sustainability, and resilience. These are also, there are also detailed technical documents and templates that support each one of the design checklists, including zero-carbon building, embodied carbon reporting template, zero-carbon building lifecycle cost calculators, accessibility/inclusivity requirements, building animation system requirements, carbon pricing escalation, approach and guidance, measurements and verification guidelines, renewable energy and carbon offset programs, standard methods for modeling, and workspace modernization, office planning guides. The next three slides will provide a sample of measures within the standard that exceed the maximum standard required, very important to occupants' comfort, satisfaction, asset life, use, and environmental impacts. So for example, during the accessibility/inclusivity checklist, we're going to be looking at things like acoustics. Building, Building on Ontario Building Code, National Building Code, and AODA requirements, increasing accessibility to workspace for residents and society in general increases the quality of life, creates more independence, and better social interaction. As an example, for acoustics within the room or space, this is an important aspect of how accessible and usable a building is for everyone. Acoustical properties of a space can help people who are blind or have low vision navigate the environment better. Managing sound levels and reverberation helps create more acoustically comfortable environment for people who are hearing impaired, as well as support reduced environments and facility person abilities and focus on a task to be performed. For space optimization, standardizing and optimizing workspace designs and furniture results in lower capital cost and maintenance cost, reduce space requirements and increased work for satisfaction. Across all regional facilities, layouts and furniture will be the same, allowing staff for most flexible touchdowns at various locations. So here is an example of an office density that we would use, one of the measures from the standard itself. Sustainability and resilience, design checklist. So in response to the region declaration of climate emergency in 2020, early 2020, reducing GHD emission and achieving GHG reduction targets is critical. The standard includes measures that will address the impacts of regional facilities to the environment. For example, onsite energy generation reduces reliance on grid utilities. Tighter building envelopes and increased building system efficiencies will reduce the consumption in utilities such as water, electricity, and gas. Considerations extend beyond the building itself and to the surrounding grounds, as noted in the slide. So the standard will be a holistic approach to facility design, ensuring alignment with corporate regional goals, and to be equal or better to any mandatory standard or codes currently enforced. Sustainable facilities with low GHD emission, low usage, that maximize the building footprint to its greatest potential are the overarching outcomes of the standard and its designs reach to achieve.
So moving forward, we know that technology changes, and with that, we want to make sure that the DURM standard stays current with changing legislation, changing technologies, and changing requirements of occupants and the building in general. So what will be established is what we're referring to as the DURM standard team, and it will be that same cross-departmental team that developed the standard, and they will be charged with maintaining that standard moving forward. We do have a regular review schedule that we will have in place, and we will be actually really monitoring how we're applying the standard in the first two years, just to make sure that we've got it right, that it's simple and easy to follow, and that any changes that are happening at the local level can be incorporated into our product. Thank you.
Thank you, members of council. Questions to presentation? Mayor Schumer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, and thank you for the presentation. You mentioned in the one slide near the end, vegetated roofs. How many of those do we currently have in township per, on regional buildings?
We currently don't have any. We do have plans in the budget forecast to put a green roof at regional headquarters.
And is that, is that the only building that we're planning to do that at?
At this point, it's the only building that we've studied.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Witten.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Jenny, thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions. The simple one is, does this apply to buildings only?
It will apply to all regional facilities. So the administration areas of water plants, for example, the standard will apply, but not in the plant proper. But it will be all regional facilities moving forward.
Okay, so I'll ask this question, but perhaps it doesn't apply. So the region is moving their, the Water Street Pumping Station in Skugog over to Bird's Lay. And I just wonder, is there collaboration, or can there be collaboration? I believe at the time, we had a presentation about it being moved, and one of the questions asked by a councillor was, could the energy produced from that pumping station perhaps be used to generate heat for the pool that is directly almost beside it? So my, in a broad sense, the question is, will there be collaboration, or can there be collaboration, or would it even apply in this case?
I think for, you're talking about like a small district heating type of facility to actually heat the pool. I think that would have to be studied. I don't know if the volumes at that site would be sufficient to do that. We are looking at establishing a wet project, so a waste energy transfer project with one of the developers in Whippee. So this is just groundbreaking for us. So I'm sure that could be looked at, but I'm not sure whether the capacity would be sufficient.
Okay, well, it was more, more in a general form question anyway, but I was just using that as an example. And my third question is, so with the removal of that pumping station to its new site, the current plan is to pave over the existing area. Is the ground surface and what is used for ground surface cover considered in this building design?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you, Chair, through you, to staff. So again, appreciate the report, and that's excellent. I guess my question was around, first one was around like AODA compliance. As we go through that, will we have, be able to bring sure that all regional facilities are up to the proper standard in time with this, or is it only when we're going to be doing renovation work at the different facilities? So we may not hit the guideline. I think it's for 2025.
Yes, so with AODA, once you start a major renovation, you're no longer grandfathered into the legislation. So we would be, as we progress through a facility and make changes, we would be bringing it up to the standard.
So, okay, so if I ask the question a different way, when do you think we would have 100% compliance, AOD compliance against all our facilities? Do we have a plan or timeline around that?
Not at this time, we don't, we don't. That's something that certainly we should be looking at, though.
Okay, and then my only, last question is about on the, on the green standards. So is this, when we're building these, and we looked at inputs from the different green standards from different municipalities. So are we going to have that in all the facilities as we do renovations, as outlined in your plan?
As we do renovations, it will be as the renovation will allow. So there'll be some renovations where we can't incorporate every piece of the standard.
Fair enough.
Definitely building a new facility, we will be considering all of those standards.
Okay, perfect. That's great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Counselor Neal?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess my question is, the methane gas, and I'm talking about the Ritson Road landfill site. It's a big planet, like as you know, methane gas is a planet warming situation right across the world. But I was going to want, ask if there's anything that the region has ongoing to do something with methane gas. Because right now, it's just being let out of the ground through stacks around Ritson Road.
Counselor Neal, there is a plan for that site. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, I believe at that site, we're going to be piloting a bio-cover treatment to manage the methane. It goes through an organic layer that reduces the impacts of it. I'm not as technically familiar with that project as perhaps Ian McVay might be, or someone from our Waste Management Division. I don't know if Ian would be comfortable speaking to this.
Mr. McVay, are you comfortable to speak to this?
At a high level, I would defer to Andrew Evans or Waste for follow-up. But you're right, Jenny, that there is a landfill bio-cover pilot that's being applied to the Ashwell landfill, approximately half of the land area, that is basically converting the methane into carbon dioxide. So changing from greenhouse gas that has about a 25x global warming potential to carbon dioxide, which has a one-time carbon dioxide potential, so significantly reducing those emissions. There'll be more on that in the presentation that I slated to deliver in the near future, in this meeting.
In this meeting.
But in terms of the technical details, Counselor Neal, I would have to defer, in terms of the specific microbes or recipe for that landfill bio-cover, I'd have to defer to the technical experts in the Waste Division.
Yeah, okay. And just further to that, there's one municipality that's using the methane gas for energy. So instead of just letting it out the pipes into the air, and I'm not really happy about the neighborhoods with Ashwell encroaching now, like in that area, methane gas is dangerous. But the fact of the matter is, they're using the methane gas to, for energy now. There's a municipality that's doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McDougal?
Thank you, Chair Henry. Thank you for the presentation. I don't know if I'm the only geek in the room that's excited about some of the building changes that are coming forward in terms of the mass timber structures. I don't know if anyone's had a, had a look along 401 corridor, I think it was Centennial College, and down along Lakefront in Toronto, there's some mass timber buildings coming in. They're really exciting for Canada. We are a country that has a lot of wood, and so this is great. It embodies the carbon, you know, when you build it in mass timber, it's captured in there.
Questions to the presentation?
Sorry, thank you, sir.
But I do appreciate your comment.
And in terms, so will these be, so in terms of our greener building standards, will we be looking at future buildings in terms of those kind of construction standards? Through, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we will. One of the things to remember about mass timber, though, is that it doesn't apply to all facilities. So for example, our Seaton Long-Term Care Facility, we did look at the applicability of mass timber, and it's not applicable to that type of facility due to its use. So there are some limitations on what we can do with mass timber, but that is certainly something that we'll be looking at.
Okay, and then in terms of building finishes as well, the green standards will be looked at as well in terms of carpet or tile versus like comparisons and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Noddy?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. When we take a look at the outcomes for the DURM standard, provides quantifiable and measurable outcomes, resulting in facilities that are welcoming, support a diverse community and workforce. How do we measure that? Because that sort of seems, dare I say, a little airy-fairy.
To speak to that one, well, definitely, everything new that we're going to be building is you're going to have zero GHD emissions. So that's something that you can measure. Maybe not everything we're going to be able to measure. If you guys are going to be able to walk through the building once it's finished, you're going to see the difference in what we did with HQ, with WMP. You know, so light penetration within the space. There's a number of studies that were done on how you design the space and how people feel within the space itself. Also providing different facilities, like we're going to have gender-neutral washrooms and sponge rooms, or multi-faith rooms, so allowing people to experience their life within ours, our facilities. We're going to make them much more user-friendly, how should I say, maybe that way. So in an aspect, you're saying there's going to be a number one to 10. Now we're going to be running surveys, saying one to 10, is it a great space? Probably not. Just overall, what we've been kind of seeing, if you design the space right, space right, and you have right amenities, it results in much better space.
But I guess from, when we talk about quantifiable, how do we quantify our welcoming in a numeric sense? Because that's what you're sort of presenting in this presentation.
So I'll have our CAO respond.
With respect to staff in our buildings, we did begin with an employee census last year, and we'll be continuing that going forward. So we actually can measure their satisfaction and comfort in the workplace. We also do a number of outreach projects through our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Division with that as an underlying theme. So it is possible to see the change in staff morale, in culture, and also in welcoming the public to the building.
So will that, that's sort of what you're using as your baseline? We're going to sort of see how this policy improves that?
This policy is much broader than that, and it's looking at addressing our overall climate impact with respect to how we design and build our buildings. With respect to our office modernization project, it's very much looking at how we can create spaces where staff can collaborate, be comfortable, and enjoy coming to the workplace. And the best way to get that feedback is from staff directly. So we don't do that during a variety of means, including public town halls, the census, as I discussed. And I believe during a lot of the design, Jenny, you did reach out to staff for feedback. I know I was certainly in a number of focus groups around how we would proceed with the design. But this project before you today is much broader than that, because it is intended to do our bit to adjust the climate emergency, which council declared a few years ago.
Okay, but I want to know from a policy standpoint, if we are going to look at these outcomes, how are they going to be presented to us in the future? And what kind of, how are we going to be able to see from a baseline to implementing the policy to the outcomes that we want to achieve for taxpayers? Because I think when we talk about quantifiable, we're looking at some sort of number to sort of have that, have that result that we can present to taxpayers. Because if we can't do that, why are we saying that in the presentation?
So just to follow up, we will be able to measure that when we do one census to the next census. And the idea is the census that was undertaken last year provided us with baseline data. So there will be some hard data in that. I'll also remind council that as a result of these changes, we save taxpayers a significant amount of money in headquarters alone, where our capital budget four years ago included construction of a second building. Because of the work that Jenny and team are doing, that was taken out of the capital program and is no longer required.
So putting in place this type of policy, what kind of savings over long term could we see for taxpayers?
So, Mr. Manuel, I think in existing buildings, as we make the necessary changes, I think what the councillor is asking, can we quantify the energy savings or energy savings that will be, costs go up, but if we were to maintain the energy savings as neutral, that would be a savings based on some of the challenges?
So as part of the application of the standard, that type of financial analysis is going to be done to show us the savings in energy, along with the incremental costs over the lifecycle of the building. So in some cases, there will be an increased capital cost to incorporate some of the items that are in the standard. But over time, those measures pay for themselves when you consider in the cost of carbon and the impacts to the environment, and showing leadership to other organizations as the region. In terms of the outcomes of the social, which you were asking about, we do get quite a bit of feedback from the public in the building. That's one of the reasons why we're installing that new elevator in the lower lobby, because it was a very difficult navigation for people coming in from the south entrance that weren't familiar with the building to find the elevator bank, which is in the heart of the building. So listening to that feedback, that's one of the reasons why we initiated that project, and we will get further feedback from the public. And we can solicit that in many different ways to know if they're satisfied when they come to get their services at the region, particularly when we get into the second phase of modernization, where we're moving all of the public and human services to one counter on the main level. And that's going to be the opportunity where we're going to really be able to tap into the public satisfaction.
And then, I guess, so over time, when these new buildings are constructed and the DURM standards applied through subsequent reporting, we should sort of see over time savings, financial savings to taxpayers?
Yes. It's much more expensive to go back and do something than it is to do it upfront. So definitely, when some of the items that we have in the standard actually become requirements, which we predict that they will, and we will already be advanced far enough that we don't have to go back to retrofit our buildings, and that will definitely be a savings.
Thank you.
Counselor Shied?
Thank you so much, through you, Chair Henry. While Counselor Amara was speaking, I heard about gender-neutral bathrooms. While that is coming up to be a standard, would there be gender-specific bathrooms as well as gender-neutral bathrooms?
Yes, there'll be both features in each facility as we move forward.
Thank you so much, because as diversity is there and more people are coming in, there are, there are many women who are uncomfortable with using gender-neutral bathrooms. So I would, I would like to see them. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
That exhausts, no, Mayor Carter?
Just because the conversation did come up, can you give us an update in regards to where we are with the renovations here, and when the completion date will be done?
Well, I'm proud to say that the fifth floor, one side, will be open this month. The other side later in the year. And can you give an update on the fourth floor, please?
Sure. So the fifth floor will actually be reopening, and staff will be returning at the end of this month. And then the way the renovations took place was they kind of went around like a clock on the floor. So the balance of the floor, which is the northwest side, will be finished in June or July. And the fourth floor will be following shortly after that. We have an amazing contractor that actually managed to keep materials coming in and moving through COVID. So we did not lose any time due to that, which was very good news. So the phase, next phase will be the main lobby and lower level, and that work is going to be tendered out shortly, and that will take us into 2025. And then we'll have the second and third floors left. And that will take us into twenty twenty five, and then we'll have the second and third floors left to do, which will take us to twenty twenty six.
It it is a very big project.
It's a career project.
Well, uh just in in fairness to staff, uh supply chain challenges, and same in any other construction industry, has been a real challenge for us. Um here in the building, the delay on product has been a challenge. Uh we were lucky, we were able to start some of it during COVID when having staff work uh remotely. So considering the challenges that we've had with uh getting what we need, um I think staff done a great job moving it ahead.
So uh just to follow up on that, you said the main floor will be under construction for two years?
Um I I don't know the exact timeframe that the main floor will be under construction, but it's going to take place over those two years. So the first part of that construction will actually involve building a a temporary front counter, because the building will still remain open and will still be providing services, because we need to demolish everything behind there to build the new human services counter. And that's where all services will be be provided. There'll be no more um public having to travel up the core of the building to to talk to staff. The staff will be right there at the front counter. So it is, it's a significant renovation. And part of the other, excuse me, part of the other um challenge we had is staging, because we have actually had to displace about six hundred staff while we were doing um the first two floors of this building. So finding swing space for those staff to work, we we kind of, you know, COVID kind of really did help us with that because we did have to vacate the building. But staff still needed to come into the office, so finding swing space for enough staff uh of that magnitude was very difficult for us. So at the staging also, we have to be very careful as we move through the building to make sure that staff can still work and services can still be delivered.
The the other challenge in council that approved, the current entrance into this building is not very energy efficient. And there's a substantial amount of work that has to be done to make sure that we don't lose all that heat as people come and go. So this building was built uh in a time when those thoughts weren't there, and they need to be fixed. And uh I I am very much looking forward to seeing the energy savings once that front door is replaced.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clark, none online, and we'll move on to item four point two. Uh Gemma Sim, Project Manager, My Durham Three One One, and Jennifer McCarthy, Director of People and Change Advisory Services, K P M G Canada. Mr. Manuel, thank you for your presentation.
Good morning, Chair Henry and members of council. Today, the team from Corporate Services would like to share information on the Durham, My Durham Three One One project and recent key milestones. My Durham Three One One is a key enterprise project that was previously led by Chief Information Officer, Kalen Chikravanti, following Casey leaving the region. Uh this area is reporting to me directly now, and I'm very pleased to see the project continue and thrive. I would like to introduce Janade Sarwar, uh the Director of Service Durham, which will, which includes the contact center, and the Project Manager, Gemma Sim. With my sponsorship and the partnership between the two areas of the project, I feel we have a strong leadership team that will see the project through to completion and success. Today, I am also joined by a representative from our technology implementation partner, K P M G. I would like to introduce Jennifer McCarthy. I think she's on the line. A Director for People Change and Advisory Services at K P M G. Is she there, Alec?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I will now hand over the presentation to Gemma to provide a project update and overview of the new My Durham Three One One customer portal.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present today. Many of you have all very heard about My Durham Three One One, but I would like to give you an overview of the background of the project and then give you some news of some of our exciting achievements that we've received to date. My Durham Three One One is about the customer. It's about our residents, our visitors, local businesses and institutions, and how those customers engage with the region of Durham and how they would engage with us for service requests and information inquiries. My Durham Three One One is about ensuring that these customers don't need to navigate a complex landscape of many phone numbers, of many email addresses, many web pages, in order to get information on the service they need or the inquiry that they have for the region. The My Durham Three One One project provides the one phone number, three one one, the people, the processes and the technology in order for us to deliver that seamless customer experience. In December of twenty twenty two, we consolidated to the one phone number, three one one, meaning that if you reside within Durham and need to access the contact center, you can just dial the phone number, three one one, and get access to our customer service representatives. We now have the new division, Corporate Services, Service Durham, that operates the call center in that new single tier, in that single model contact center, and continues to grow with processes and resources being added over the next few months and coming time for the project. We've also launched self-service options with the ability to purchase garbage tags online to conduct an online payment and the ability to engage with your Google Smart Home device or even Alexa to ask for information about region of Durham and information about services. We also have a new customer self-service portal, and it's at the webpage, mydurmthreeoneone.ca. This customer service and portal was launched on national three one one day, and it allows our members of the public from March the eleventh of this year to be able to access an information resource, and I'm gonna give you a quick live demonstration of that resource. By using technology that we have worked with our partner, K P M G, and they'll talk as well, but we allowed us to opportunity to automate some of our processes, to automate how we take service requests and translate them and track them through from that um point of inquiry right through to them being resolved. It allows us to ensure that we track our customer interactions, so we know at any time where that customer service request is and who's working on it. It allows us to connect people to the right person, the right regional employee, to get an answer to their inquiry. This new solution also gives us data. It gives us data that we can access to ensure that we have that information to be able to respond to customer inquiries in a timely manner that meets the customer's needs and also to respond to data to understand trends and service requests, to understand what our customers are engaging with the region for and how we can best respond to them. It also allows us to streamline the work that we are doing, to give the opportunity to be twenty four seven by having that online presence and allowing customers, if they choose, to access that self-service channel on our new portal. So I'm gonna slip, skip this slide here and give you in the demonstration so that you can see this information real time. In the new customer service portal, we're using the product called Microsoft Dynamics Three Sixty Five. We have went live as of the beginning of March with a number of service requests that you can see on the first column on the page. Those service requests allow us to cover many of the departments throughout the municipality, allow us to give the opportunity for that customer to complete information and to get their service request logged with them with the new contact center. The solution also allows us to track interactions. Interactions are when you um or a member of the public approach them to a front counter. It allows us to track that engagement at front counters, such as the public front counter here. It allows us to understand the traffic at those counters, the types of information people are requesting from us, and also allows us to to act upon that information by having quantifiable data. In this solution, we also have a knowledge base. A knowledge base is exceptionally important to the My Durham Three One One project, as it allows our customer service representatives to have access to the answers for service requests and to have accen- ans- answers so that they can support that first contact resolution, so that they can either give the answer there and then to the member of the public, or they can route that customer appropriately so that that person can get their question answered as quickly and seamlessly as possible. We also are integrating with other technology applications. There are many examples where there is rekeying of information or a manual piece of paper. And the My Durham Three One One project wants to take information from the customer through our new portal and deliver it right to the operational crew that need that information to be able to go out and repair a traffic light, for example, if that was the service request. So this is our first release. We went small and started with a few service requests and have another handful of service requests coming at the end of April, um and more coming at the beginning of June as well. The intention is that we have as many service requests as our public need, and that we have a range of service requests that cover all of the different divisions within the regional municipality of Durham. We also have some new features as well, such as expansion of online payments, and a first move for the region into using um live agent chat. So allowing customers that prefer to use a chat um chat feature to be able to communicate with a customer service representative, they will have that that opportunity as well. We also plan on having a virtual agent chat, which means that you're chatting with almost like a bot. So it means that if somebody was inquiring out with hours or in the evening, they can still get signposted to the information they need. So how do service requests work? You've ta- you've heard me talking about service requests. Well, to the region, the service request starts when a member of the public, our customers, inquires about um something they need done, something they need investigated, or something that they need to um ask the region. It's submitted via a phone call to our new number, three one one, on our My Durham Three One One portal or even at one of our counters in person. That service request is then either resolved immediately if we have the knowledge in our knowledge base, or it is scheduled, investigated, researched by the most appropriate person. It then makes um the way to being in progress while that work is conducted. We would then intend that all service requests are closed or completed or acted upon in accordance with the nature of that service request. At this time, as each of these, um the service request is moving through each of these stages, the customer has the opportunity to be updated via an electronic notification. They can choose for us to send them an email so that they can see where that service request is at any time, giving them that comfort that someone is working on it and someone has that service request under their remit. I'd like to switch to our live solution to be able to see the My Durham Three One One portal. Thank you. So this is our live product that you can visit on our website. You'll see here on, sorry, on the My Durham Three One One dot C A website. For this portal, you'll see that the opportunity for the customers to use different sections. They have a learn and help section. That's where they can learn about service requests, they can learn about how the region does business, and they can get information that may stop them or may give them the answer they're already looking for, and they don't need to submit a service request. We also have the ability to search if you had a service request number or to be redirected to some of the most important other locations that they need to go. If they need to do a service that perhaps resides on Durham dot C A, or perhaps if they need support from another organization such as Two One One or M Durham Region Police as well. For all of the service requests that we offer, we have a tile here where you can access information about that service request. We intend to try and give the customer as much information upfront as possible. So in this demonstration, if I use regional inquiries, we would go into the regional inquiry section, and we'll see information about the types of things you can access for the region. And one of those is a service request relating to contact the Office of the C A O. For this information, the customer can present their request, present the information they need. For example, they would like to be followed up by an email, and then they can provide information about which service request. So in this example, we'll say they're looking for information on climate change, and they're looking for information on how the region is responding to that. The customer types in the information, and when they go next, they will be asked for their contact details. Those contact details are for us to be able to get back in touch with the member of the public and to be able to provide their response. If you look at the top right-hand side of the screen, the customer also has the opportunity to sign in. If they signed in and created an account, they would always be able to see where this service request is just by logging in. They would see if it was in progress or if it had been resolved, and it would also remember their contact information for them so that they don't have to rekey this information all the time. Once the customer hits submit and provides all the information we need from that service request, they are given a case reference number, this number in the blue box. That's important because when they contact us again, they can use that case reference number, and it makes it easier for our customer service representatives to find that case and to be able to give an up to the answer. If I switch now to the internal perspective, we have an agent portal that our customer service representatives in My Durham Three Oms, in Corporate Services, Service Durham, they access this portal, and they can find the service request that member of the public have submitted online, or they can add new service requests themselves. Our agents are provided with a dashboard of information, so anything they need to do with their job is right here on one single page for them to access and to make their life easier as well. They can open that service request that we just submitted, and they can see all of the information that the customer input online. They can see the information, the reason for the request, and if you look at the top, there's a business process flow with the circles and the lines. They can now take this case, this service request, and transition it through to assigning it to an appropriate staff member, to moving it to in progress as then um service request is investigated, and they can complete it right here from this single screen as well. This is good for us as it gives us one single location for that service request. If somebody calls that member of the public, we can log it in the timeline. So if another member of staff picks up this service request, they can see everything that's been done and have a whole picture of this specific service request. So that's all I'm gonna present at the moment. I would like to move on to hand over to Jennifer McCarthy, who is from our technology partner, K P M G. We've been working on change management. As we've implemented this new service request process, change management is one of our most important features in our projects. And I'd love to pass to Jennifer, who's online, to give us the um information around change management. I'm gonna pause and see if we can hear Jennifer.
Jennifer, can you hear us? All right, all right. I can see her. Uh, Mr. Clark, can you give directions, please?
Jennifer, you should see a push to, request to speak button in the bottom center of your screen. Looks a little bit like a talking head. If you could press that, please.
Okay, if Jennifer can't get on, um I can continue on with the slides.
Uh then, could you, please?
So the impact of the change is exceptionally important for the My Durham Three One One project. We're moving from our current state on the left-hand side to the future state on the right. We are transitioning from a transitional swi- a traditional switchboard model where we took the call and we passed it to an employee, another employee, to being able to take that customer call and to be able to resolve, to provide information and to transition them smoothly to the next member of staff with a warm transfer, allowing that customer the need to not have to repeat their story. We're also moving from many different applications to a single application, meaning that if the customer connects with the corporate call center or our new service term call center, we will have that information at our fingertips to be able to provide an update on that service request. We're also moving towards consistency of service, allowing us to have one way of doing things, one way of delivering customer service, and to be able to respond and to track service requests in that one simple manner. We've also talked about reporting. Now, with all one in- information and one location, it allows us to analyze data and to provide answers on the number of service requests, for example, that we receive and how we're tracking and performing service requests. It allows us to perform that um search much easier. And by using the Microsoft Dynamics Three Sixty Five product, it gives us access to such a wider range of data and analytics through the Power B I platform as well. It also allows us to be customer focused. It allows us to listen to how the customers want to be engaged with and act upon that information. We started this project with um a customer survey, asking our customers about their current experience and delivering services based on that result of that baseline analytics. And delivering services based on that result of that baseline analytics. We also have the opportunity as we move forward to continue to engage with our customers and to deliver services based on their needs. To embed that change, we are speaking to all of the regional management, our leadership team and also U S council. To to request support in that change management. To request support to share information with your citizens, with the residents about the MyDarm three one one portal. To share information on the work that's happening in Durham, such as the new single phone number three one one. And to be a sensor for us to feed back through our leadership team. Information and requests that the customers have in terms of how we deliver services. We'd also like you to champion that change, champion the information you've heard today and share it at all opportunities that you possibly have. We're very blessed that the leadership team are supporting our employees. And supporting our employees to let them to participate in training. So that we can be skilled and use this new technology to respond to our customers' needs. We encourage you to share with the customers to participate in the services that we have available to them. And to participate in these new technology channels. I will stop there. Thank you so much for listening to me this morning and I'm welcome any questions.
Okay, thank you. First in the um. In the request to speak is councillor Crawford.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Through you, to the present presenter. Thank you. That's, this is very exciting, actually. Will this replace the Durham Waste App?
No, so this won't replace the Durham Waste App. The MyDarm three one one project is expanding channels and expanding opportunities for customers to engage to us. So we are adding new functionality and new features. But we're also making sure that those features talk to each other. So information submitted by the Waste App will end up in our new Microsoft Dynamics product.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you. That's my question.
Thank you. Members of council, lunch is in the back. I I would like not to take a recess. So what I'm going to suggest is there are a number of speakers in the speaker box. We have quorum in the room. I'm going to suggest that the the. On my left side of the council chambers, that those members of council step out, grab their lunch and immediately come back to their chair. And we'll try to do this in an organized manner so we can proceed with the meeting. So we'll start with councillor Jobb in that side of the room. Mister Clerk, at the same time, I need you to maintain quorum in the room for me. So we have quorum this way for now. And the next in the chat box is councillor Shan.
Thank you so much. Through you, Chair Henry. First of all, I'd like to congratulate and thanks. And say my thanks for the tremendous effort for bringing three one one to the region. This is very exciting indeed. My question on this is about live agent chat and the timing of the live agent chat. I I'm assuming it won't be twenty four seven.
No, absolutely. So right now we are building our live agent chat and we'll be deploying throughout the end of the year, hopefully, for live agent chat. The live agent chat will not be twenty four seven at this phase, but it will be supplemented by a chatbot. That can still answer questions or can support customers to to be and signposted to the services the next morning, for example. At that time. But the intention is that the chatbot will be able to support customers on a twenty four seven basis.
Oh, it's the time of A I, right?
Mister Chair, I'll add to that as well. As we're implementing different phases as we go along, we're adding things. So we have the whole plan coming up. But some things will be added over time, as as Gemma was saying, that that is coming this summer.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Henry. Just a couple of more questions very quickly. How to, how would you transition a call from. From coming to the region and if this is a municipal matter to the different municipalities?
Thank you for the question. We currently have the M O Us with all the local area municipalities on how we transition the calls from the region to the local area municipality. So we understand entry Isaac query and we do a one transfer. Which means we connect with the caller on the other side, explain the issue and then smoothly hand over the call.
Thank you so much. I I really do appreciate the warm transfer. My next question is, it looks like it will be done in phases. And there will be continuous improvements, of course, in an understandably. When do you think that this will be a full blown three one one?
Through you, Mister Chair. The plan was over a two year period. So we're hoping to be finished by the end of this year, early next year. About that timeline. Sometimes it depends on the difficulties or the 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 scope of the work that's being transferred over. And the timelines that that we're hitting with each of the departments. It's a very large project, so. The timeline is fairly tight. It it started out fairly tight. We are, for the most part, keeping in line with that that plan. But it it probably in in realistic timelines, it will be in the spring, March to early April next year.
I see. Fantastic. Thank you so much. Again, congratulations. This is very exciting. That'll be all. Thank you, Chair Henry.
Thank you, Mayor Carter.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. And yeah, we're very excited about the program. I just want to go back to the warm transfer to local municipalities. Such as from the great city of Oshawa, where we have Service Oshawa. Some of the the reports that you had shown in your presentation showed like a report structure. Is that report structure going to also be represented or duplicated at the local level so that. That not only feedback goes to us, but it goes back to you to see that it's been resolved and that the file's moving forward? Does it have that capacity?
Absolutely. So right now the technology has that capacity. And we are working with a group of different municipalities through our municipal community of practice. To share information on that and to seek and support from those municipalities to to perform that service. We are also working with some of the municipalities, such as in the township of Skugog. To share a solution so that they can use the same product as us and deliver that customer service in a similar manner to the region. We're using the work we've been doing with the township of Skugog as that flagship that we can promote that model to other municipalities. And Oshawa would be one of them as well.
So would that require us to do an infrastructure investment in regards to the technology that that you're utilizing so that it mirrors on both sides?
Absolutely. So there's the option to have this on a scaled level that they can do no infrastructure changes. Or if that municipality wanted to do changes, we can work with them as well. The intention is that the solutions can talk to each other regardless of the technology that they have.
So the information sharing would go back and forth. So on the regional side, you'll see that it's either being resolved or addressed. And at the at the local level, that we'll get the reports in regards to. Where that where that issue is being either resolved or or passed on.
Absolutely. Through you, Mister Chair. Absolutely. The the intention is that that is the long term vision of the project. Absolutely. Right now, we are finishing the in house and working on the region of Durham, working with our pilot with Skugog. And the long term vision is to connect further with those municipalities.
Great. Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wu.
Yes, and thank you through the chair. I think that's very exciting, especially from the customer service and customer experience. One thing that came up yesterday out of finance administration. Was the two thousand twenty one Durham Region Accessibility Report. And it spoke about, and I think this is something that we should shout about. Durham Region is the first regional municipality in Canada to bring regional services to smart home phone devices such as. Google and Google Home and Alexa. Can you speak to that and how you would utilize that?
Absolutely. So yes, Durham Region was the first regional municipality to work with the Google Home device and also your Alexa device. Right now on those devices, you can ask basic questions about information from the region. You can ask questions like, who's my local councillor or what bus is transferring past this next bus stop outside my house, for example. Our intention is now to build on those devices. And to ensure that we can start to add add service requests there. So that the customer can actually request a service and it be transferred as if they had made a phone call. Or came into headquarters themselves. We're very proud that we've won many awards for the work we've done with those devices. We're also trying to ensure on a wider basis that we meet all of the accessibility. And requirements that are in place for having a portal, for example. And we're proud now that we have the ability for that portal to be changed language for our customers as they choose. And there's many different accessibility features there. We will continue as the project grows to expand Google and Alexa. And to expand the accessibility functionality that's available throughout our whole project.
Yeah, through the chair. And I thank you for that and something that we should be very proud of and. I don't see that in your presentation as one of your key portal features. So maybe you might want to add that.
Yes, through you, Mister Chair. We will add that and we will showcase that success. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greg.
Thank you, Chair. Gemma, great presentation. Super excited about this. My background's from customer service and I think this is exactly what we want to do. Much like councillor Wu was saying, I'm thrilled that you're referring to residents as customers and that we treat them like that. Janade was one of the first regional employees I interfaced with when I came onto this job and he's been very, very helpful. From the customer service and the the project management background. I think it's a quantum leap forward from a customer service perspective. I just have a couple of questions. One would be, once it's in full operation or perhaps even as you build over the next twelve eighteen months. Will you be presenting recurring trending reports and so on to council?
Through you, Mister Chair. Yes, we plan on giving council updates as we progress through the project. And we are very pleased to have the expertise of both of these people here. Bringing their expertise to the project and moving it forward to where it needs to go. So I appreciate your comments. Thank you. But we will, we will periodically bring updates.
Perfect. Thank you. My second question then would be, you've asked us to be champions of it. And I've been doing that. You've had some great success already. You may think that it's sort of a soft launch, but. Through Janade, I I've been directing some customers, some residents your way with phenomenal service, like great response, calling them back, answering their questions. And I don't hear from them the second time, which is a pretty good barometer of good service. If in the future any of us get calls from residents about any kind of an issue on a service. Let's like use something as a a lack of garbage pickup or a concern about a road or any of those type of things. If we receive those calls now, what's your preferred approach? Do we come to you or do we ask, actually ask them to go on to the My three one one portal or call you?
Through you, Mister Chair. It it is up to you, but our preference is that you would direct the resident to call three one one. That way the information comes through the portal. It goes through our tracking system, the C R M. And we can gauge where it is in the process as well to make sure that it's closed. So we actually do track that information and we make sure that all of the cases are closed in a timely manner.
True. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Yamada.
Sorry. Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Happy to see that we're being phased out here. No, I'm kidding. When we talk about accessibility, because we're talking about ensuring that this is customer focused, that the service. Opportunities are are one stop. Now, can you sort of explain how we ensure. That a program like this is fully accessible for all residents of various needs to be able to. Access the service and no longer need to access their local councillor.
Absolutely. Through you, Mister Chair. So we intend to have as many different channels as our customers need. So that that customer has the choice of how they engage with the region. And through the technology, they they engage with the region. So that it's in the customer's hands, whether they use a phone or whether they use a device or whether they come into headquarters. There are no channels being phased out. As we work with each of those channels individually, we are reviewing accessibility. Working with our experts in accessibility within the region to ensure that we have all of the features within that one channel. At least accounted for, promoted and also shared with individuals who need it. So promoting some of the features that are there. We already have good progress in many of our channels, such as transitioning to voice through the smart home devices. And on the self service portal, transitioning to different sizes and and having that ability that that portal can be read. And also making sure that there's different language options as well. We really do want to strive to have all of the channels accessible. And we will continue to review that and continue to launch new functionality as we move through the project.
Thank you. I guess from looking at a program like this and wanting to ensure that we're bringing value to taxpayers. What kind of cost savings do you think we'll be able to see going from where we are now? To once this program's fully implemented?
I'll have our C A O respond, please.
I don't know if we can quantify that at this point in time. The intent of this was really to dramatically. Improve the way we serve our customers across the region. That being said, there certainly will be efficiencies in terms of how we manage requests for service and deal with issues in the community. We will certainly be monitoring going forward through the annual budget process to see where there are efficiencies and savings that we can capitalize on. But right now, we're, to be quite frank, on the expense end of the equation, where we're trying to get the program. Up and running by the end of the year as quick as as efficiently as possible.
Okay, so I guess that answer is sort of a non answer for now in the sense that we're going to be seeing. Through budget process, we'll be seeing, hopefully, some efficiencies for taxpayers.
Well, I think the entire system is a huge efficiency for a taxpayer. They pick up the phone or go on to their computer and they have one number and their issue is dealt with. That could be one issue or ten different issues. They can make their payments electronically. Four years ago, that was not possible. So there are many efficiencies already being realized by the taxpayer across Durham. For a diversity of services that both we deliver and the local municipalities deliver.
Thank you. And I, my last question would be. Sort of taking us through, i- if a resident calls in, they have a waste collection issue, the waste. Was missed. Can you sort of take me through what the process would look like and what the resident would sort of see?
Absolutely. So if the customer chose to use the phone, they could dial the phone number three one one. And they could speak to a customer service representative. They are met with an automated process that allows for some inquiries, it to be resolved through that automated process before they speak to the customer service representative. Now we have transitioned our Works Waste Division into the new Corporate Services Service Durham. So that that customer would be able to speak directly to an agent. That would be able to take the details of their inquiry, to be able to check that they have met all the requirements, they have qualification criteria to check. That the waste was out at the right time, for example, was the right weight limits, things like that. And they would process that information before transferring it to the right party so that they can go and have that garbage uplifted. The intention is that that process can be as seamless as possible and all track and all was tracked. If that customer was contacting regularly about that waste pickup, we would also be able to see that in one location. To be able to escalate and to realize that there was a problem there. And if the customer called in again about that pickup. We would have tracking in our customer relationship management system so the agent could answer exactly where that case is right now.
Thank you.
Through you, Mister Chair. I will add to that. This is an increase in our customer service level to the residents of Durham. So there, back to your original question, there is a cost to that increase. But there, hopefully, it will be offset with the efficiencies that we'll have with this new model.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
So Mister Mayor Foster, you're on the on the speakers list and I hate to do this to you, but the the rest of your colleagues can go grab their lunch. Then I'll come back to you. Councillor Leahy?
Does it work? Ah, there we go. Waiting for the red light. Really fast. All the other questions were answered really great, fully supportive of this process. I think it's amazing. And of course, it definitely requires investments before to make the system work. This is, and they're worthwhile investments because it's about improvements. But my question is around, so if I, as a member of council, have a request from residents and I send it in. How, like generally when you have the C R M systems up, there is some visibility for us to see the progress of our process. How would I understand if I send you a request and that's managed and there's a resolution? How do I have visibility to that? I, or is that in the next phase or when will that happen?
Absolutely. So if you called in on behalf of a member of the public. We have the functionality in this customer relationship management solution for you to subscribe to that case. That would mean that the member of the. That would mean that the member of the public would get the notifications and the updates, but you could also get notifications and updates to show you as that case moved to resolution. You would also have that case reference number. We would have to make sure there was no privacy issues relating around that, but you could be updated if you had the case reference number as well.
So if there is a way to do that over, the best way to do it over email, I have requests, I always say email because then it's easy to track and all the details there. I send the email to who, and I say I'd like to be, I'd like to receive the resolution to that email. Is that the right process?
Absolutely. Email works perfectly as well, because by email, those emails are submitted straight away into our Customer Relationship Management System and will be treated in the exact same process as if you had called.
Okay, all right. But I would just have to specifically say I want to be copied on the resolution for this ticket number or whatever.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, yes.
Okay. No, that's great. That's good to know, so that we can try and adapt it into our processes. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Foster, you are between you and your lunch now, so I'll, and staff, feel free to move to the back and grab something as the opportunity comes along. Mayor Foster.
Guessing the lobster tails are already gone. Really quick question. Uptake, is it too early to gauge uptake from local municipal staff? Because we generate, because the calls come to us a huge amount of work. So how's that going?
Absolutely. So if I start with on a member of the public perspective, through you, Mr. Chair, for the members of the public, we've seen good uptake. We've seen good interactions with the smart home devices, regular steady calls, and regular clicks and submissions of service requests via the portal. We also have a good relationship with the local municipalities as well. We meet on a regular basis to share information and to make sure that we are linking with not only their technology teams, but their customer service teams as well. We worked with our local municipalities to complete those memorandums of understandings that Janade was mentioning. And we're already seeing that that good opportunity for them to engage further with us and the expansion of services at that local municipality level.
So I was actually looking more fundamentally than that. Our local staff using the service. So the nod is perfect. I just, that's a great answer. It's a great answer. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, I see no one online in that exhaustive chat box, so we'll now move on to Mr. Ian McVay, Manager of Sustainability on the Proposed Durham Greener Building Program, 2023 Cal 16.
Chief Chair Henry and members of council, just to let you know, I've got Brent Coppersen here from Windfall Ecology Centre, Executive Director, to help answer questions that might relate to their role in the proposed program. Great. So just on the, oh wait, I have got this far. It's right. Thank you, Roger. Great. So just start with some context for this program, for the Durham, Proposed Durham Greener Buildings Program. When we look at the Durham Community Energy Plan and the Low Carbon Pathway, we see really the critical importance of retrofitting buildings. That's retrofitting all of the single-family homes, as well as the larger buildings across the region. It's really a key part of our strategy. We already have the Durham Greener Homes Program that was launched last year. We have an update on that coming in the next couple of months. It's off to a really great start. And so the Durham Greener Buildings Program is really meant to be a companion to that, to help provide support to larger buildings across the region. Again, for context, this program was included in the 2023 budget that was approved last month, described as a voluntary building benchmarking and disclosure program to help provide, you know, that measure, you can't manage what you don't measure, sort of approach. But recognize that that's really just the first step in the need for a more comprehensive platform to support building owners in developing business cases and actually implementing and financing programs. So the money that was included in the budget is really for that initial core benchmarking support. But you'll see in the presentation that we do have an opportunity, quite time-limited opportunity, to try to attract some additional funding to deliver on that broader vision. So the Ontario Government currently does require private sector building owners to report their energy and water consumption on an annual basis. Currently, that applies to buildings over 100,000 square feet, but as of July 2023, it'll be ratcheting down to 50,000 square feet, so approximately tripling the number of buildings that will be subject to this program. We also have the broader public sector reporting, which requires municipal buildings, universities, school boards, hospitals as well to report their energy performance. And finally, there are requirements for the electricity and gas utilities to support building owners with energy reporting. So the program objectives for the Durham Greener Buildings Program are firstly to, you know, increase compliance with the province's existing program, especially as it expands to cover that larger set of buildings. Currently, based on our market research, we're seeing that only about a third of the buildings that were covered, that are covered by the program are actually reporting in 2021. Now, that might be explained by a bit of an aberration associated with COVID, where you had empty buildings and building owners and managers maybe you know, seized with other issues beyond energy reporting. But certainly, that does suggest there's a lot of room for improvement, again, especially as that threshold ratchets down to 50,000 square feet. So again, supporting building owners with increasing compliance, encouraging voluntary benchmarking and reporting of smaller buildings, and through that, helping to create demand for energy efficiency improvements and deep energy retrofits. We do see it critical that municipal buildings lead and sort of walk the talk and report their own building energy performance. Again, this is something that we already do directly to the province, but it's not reported in a way that provides, you know, easy visibility and transparency to the public. And so that would be an area of action for us to improve and, again, provide that sort of walking the talk sort of approach. So we did do a fairly comprehensive market characterization analysis that looked at the number of buildings and the location of buildings across the region that could participate in this. You can see it's broadly spread across the region with particular concentrations, and some of them are urban areas of the region. The largest sort of clusters of buildings are in commercial, of course, retail, offices, industrial, mainly warehousing, as well as multi-residential buildings. So again, there's, you know, broad applicability of this program across building types. We're hoping through the program to increase compliance with the provincial reporting program, again, from about 30% up to 60 or 70%. That would mean about 450 buildings participating in the program come year three. More than 1,000 if we count the broader public sector municipal buildings as well. How the program had worked for commercial participants, one thing we heard really clearly in our focus groups and stakeholder engagement was it needs to be as easy as possible. So this might not look easy, but it's actually designed to be fairly straightforward, because there is an existing platform called the Energy Star Portfolio Manager that underpins the Energy Water Performance Benchmarking Program that the province operates. And there's a really easy click box within that platform that allows for the sharing of data with the Durham Region Program. It would not be required, simply encouraged, and encouraged with carrots in terms of additional support and incentives for those building owners, including training, coaching, and other services that we'd be able to provide in partnership with other stakeholders. So the program really does have three key elements that we're seeing launching in fall of this year. The first being a region-wide community building challenge that would really encourage building owners, again, to participate in the benchmarking and reporting exercise, to engage with their key stakeholders, like their tenants and employees, and energy savings opportunities. We would provide support for building owners through the Ontario Benchmarking Help Centre that Windfall currently operates to provide one-on-one support for uploading their data into the Energy Star Portfolio Manager platform. And through that, enable them to compare their energy performance with similar buildings and with their prior years. And finally, we're proposing to create an annual recognition program, an in-person gala of some sort, that would recognize achievements of building owners, both in the public sector and in the private sector. As I mentioned, we have a time-limited opportunity to really go beyond that that I just described and realize that vision for a true retrofit, you know, local retrofit delivery hub. The federal government is currently accepting proposals under the Deep Retrofit Accelerator Initiative for programs and projects that will help to identify and aggregate deep energy retrofit projects and provide that guidance and support. Applications are due later this month. Windfall is developing an application. The Windfall Ecology Centre is developing an application, and we're proposing to provide a letter of support for them, for that exercise. And what that would look like, really, again, beyond what I described a couple of slides back, is more one-on-one support, hands-on energy coaching for building owners, training staff and occupants, providing energy efficiency audits, like investment-grade audits, that can be used to attract financing and really develop those business cases for investment, developing partnerships with third-party financing providers, a number of which have capital through the Canada Infrastructure Bank to deliver deep energy retrofits. We are proposing to work directly with the Windfall Ecology Centre to deliver this program. One, because there's significant interoperability with the current Durham Greener Homes Program that Windfall administers on our behalf, and furthermore, because of the complementary programs that they're offering through the Ontario Benchmarking Help Centre and the York Region Climate Wise Building Challenge. So there's a lot of efficiencies in terms of us partnering with them, in terms of us being able to get this off the ground in a timely manner. So that is all I've got, and I'll look forward to questions on this. And again, may look to Brent to provide some backup if there's specific to the role of Windfall. Thank you.
Questions, Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ian. Thank you for this. I'll reflect that I was at a cap-and-trade seminar, which is going back many years ago.
Yes.
At that seminar, they had identified the need for retrofit, and that's where we are going to make some impact. So this has been a long time coming. Two quick questions. One, you speak to the utilities and working with the utilities. Okay, I'm not seeing a broad smile there. Is that relationship as deep as it should be? So you've, between Oshawa PUC and Lexicon, we know people.
So there is a good working relationship with the four utilities, Enbridge, Hydro One, Alexicon, and Oshawa Power. They are all subject to this provincial, what they call the green button requirement, to really provide their customers with better access to their energy consumption data. So if you think about a building owner, a commercial office building that has 15 tenants in it, they're having a really hard time of figuring out what that total building energy consumption is, because there's 15 different accounts. So they're being pressed by the province to be able to get that data and provide it in a virtual format. We're going to be encouraging and supporting those utilities through this program to provide that service. But it's not an easy lift. There's a lot of data integration systems that work that still needs to happen for them to fulfill that role. So I'd say it's very much still a work in progress. Some are further ahead, Enbridge. I'd say further ahead in terms of being able to provide that consumption data. The electric utilities are a little bit behind.
So if you need help on the electrical utilities, as I mentioned, there are some people that might be able to help you. The second, are you going to Chambers Boards of Trade? Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Big smile, not with a happy smile.
Jen, I think it's a really important point, Mayor Foster, is that this is not so much building owners as it is businesses who are tenants in those buildings and being able to help them, you know, realize their objectives around sustainability. So certainly, all of the chambers and boards are going to be key channel partners for us to get the word out about this program and the services that it provides.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor One?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, to you, Ian. Just a question. If we've only had 31% compliance rate since 2021, and now we're increasing the expectation of what buildings should be benchmarked, how do you, I know there's lofty goals on how to encourage that, but in truth, as a business, do they, the reason for the low compliance is it because it's a pain in the butt to basically worry about it? They haven't bought into the, you know, the greener. What are the reasons that our compliance rate is so low, in your opinion?
Through, that's a great question. Through the chair, you, Mayor One, I think, I mean, the easiest way to motivate compliance would be enforcement and penalties. This is a provincial program. They are not currently doing that. It is not the role of this program to try to do that for them. Ours is a voluntary program that's really based on building owners being motivated to take this action. So, you know, I think where we have seen with voluntary programs that provide additional coaching and support, the levels of compliance that we are targeting in this program, as I said, 60, 70%, so we are hopeful, confident that we will be able to realize that, particularly if we're successful in attracting this deep retrofit accelerator funding, because then we're able to show, you know, that full supply chain of energy auditors and financing and contractors, we're actually able to realize cost savings. So, yes, I think we're hopeful. We remain hopeful.
Okay. Well, I encourage you to stay that way. I do think that that will be a challenge to get higher compliance. I believe many will feel it's just one more thing they have to do. So if there's a way, and to your point about additional support and so on, hopefully, that will help in the outreach to the various different groups and so on should help as well. So I wish you the best of luck. I think it's a great idea, and, but I do think it comes with its challenges. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, or Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there any other member of council wishing to speak to this item? I see none online and none in the chat box. In that case, Mr. McVay, I'm going to ask you to do your 2023 Annual Corporate Climate Action Plan update and Light Duty Fleet Electrification Plan, please.
Great. Thank you so much. So as the title suggests, this is an update on the implementation of our Corporate Climate Action Plan, as well as a proposed amendment to that plan to really focus on accelerating the electrification of our light-duty fleets. Background, corporate direction, of course. Council declared a climate emergency in January 2020 and directed staff to develop a corporate climate action plan that positions the region as a leader in that community-wide effort. Set GHG targets for the first time, establish a carbon budget management framework, which really integrates the consideration of these targets into our budget process and creates transparency through an annual update report, of which this is that for 2023. So again, really focused on our own infrastructure, buildings, fleet, solid waste, walking the talk. The Durham Community Energy Plan is more Durham Greener Buildings, Durham Greener Homes, the programs that we use to support emission reductions in the broader community. We have established and are operationalizing a corporate climate governance and management framework, of which, of course, council as the ultimate decision-maker in the region is a key part. We've established a corporate climate leadership committee with relevant department heads and directors to provide that into departmental leadership, and a corporate climate implementation management team with representation from the CAO's office, works, and finance, providing more of that technical and financial leadership, and then a range of working groups, including a Green Fleet group that was responsible for developing the Light Duty Vehicle Plan that is in the second half of this presentation. So just a high-level overview of the numbers and the data. Again, this itself could be a long presentation. We're not going to go into that. I think a key thing I want to highlight is the difference between non-energy-related emissions and energy-related emissions. So non-energy emissions, solid waste, our legacy landfills, the methane that Counselor Neil was referring to from some of our closed landfills, those are not related to energy consumption. Similarly, the Durham York Energy Centre, waste incineration is not directly related to energy consumption. That and the wastewater treatment, again, plant operations, this is nitrous oxide, it's not related to energy consumption. That in total comprises about two-thirds of our corporate footprint. So one-third energy-related, related to consumption of gasoline, electricity, natural gas, two-thirds non-energy-related. So it's very different from a normal corporate entity, I say normal, in the region, which would be more dominated by vehicles and buildings. It's important to note that because, you know, those non-energy sources, waste and wastewater, present unique challenges and opportunities for emissions reductions. Whereas in fleet and facilities, the technical solutions are a lot more, a lot more well-understood. whereas in fleet and facilities, the technical solutions are a lot more, a lot more well-understood. And we'll see, and we'll see the, sort of, the results of that a bit further. So when we look at the total corporate carbon footprint and the forecast of 2030, we do see some significant emission reductions coming from the landfills, and that's the bio cover that Council O'Neill was asking Jenny Demanuel about. That's very, you know, very promising early results from that, from that landfill bio cover pilot that we're hoping to expand, and if successful, would see further reductions associated with that project. Fleet greening, this is the Durham Region Transit Fleet, Bus Fleet Electrification Plan, et cetera. So with, and looking at the total footprint, we are seeing a gap, we're, you know, slightly less than halfway towards that 2030 target, based on current plans. It will be challenging to meet this target on a total emissions basis, particularly with the Durham York Energy Centre and plant capacity increases. At the same time, worth noting that the Durham York Energy Centre remains a sustainable waste management solution as compared to the previous practice of landfill and trucking waste to distant sources. When we look at the energy consumption-related emissions, and I guess what I was referring to before, the picture is a lot different. We are actually a lot closer to that 2030 target, approximately two-thirds, with the fleet greening and the, and facility retrofits that are already planned. We've got additional strategies in development that I think will see that gap narrow, and I think we're, we have a very strong opportunity to hit the target from an energy-related consumption perspective. And again, given that most corporate footprints are similar to this, it does provide that leadership in terms of energy transitions work. Key opportunities to close the gap, fleet rightsizing, electrification, which we'll hear more about, deep energy retrofits, particularly in the long-term care homes, which are large users of natural gas. We've got the zero-carbon standard, which is going to be critical, and our Energy Conservation Demand Management Plan, which is slated for an update next year on a five, with a five-year window to take us to 2029. I mentioned the landfill bio cover, we have a water wastewater GHG strategy in development as well, which will identify additional opportunities. To go back to Council O'Neill's point around methane, there are significant opportunities there around renewable natural gas and district energy generation. We have looked at methane capture in our landfills, but they're, you know, the age and structure of them aren't suitable for landfill gas capture for energy or biogas production, hence the bio cover, but there are other opportunities for methane capture and renewable natural gas generation from our water pollution control plants and a potential future anaerobic digestion facility, you know, post 2030. So with that, I'm going to jump into the light-duty fleet electrification plan, and I should mention as well, we have Maddie Ewing from Dunskey Consulting on the, on the line as well, in case there are particular technical questions I'm unable to answer, assuming she's able to unmute herself, we'll see. So the scope of the plan really is focused around light-duty vehicles in, across the region's four fleet groups. We're looking at battery-electric and plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, we're not looking at sort of, you know, hydrogen fuel cell or sort of the passive hybrid systems that don't plug in. It's about 400 vehicles in total, the largest share being the police fleet, the pursuit vehicles, you know, frontline vehicles, as well as works, the works fleet, more in the pickup truck side of things. So that's sort of the scope of it. We did, as I mentioned, we worked with a, with a Dunskey Energy Consulting, who's worked with municipalities across Canada and has a very sophisticated cost optimization model for fleet, fleet transitions, and we worked with the region's four fleet managers through the Green Fleet Working Group, really to develop a cost-effective model to help accelerate the transition of those light-duty vehicle fleets, which again, may, most of the vehicle manufacturers are already moving this way. You know, Canada has set a target for 100% of new vehicles sold to be electric by 2035. So with the fleet managers, we're, you know, we've endorsed, provisionally endorsed these, the following target years for full fleet electrification. You'll know police, of course, the longest timeline, the reasons for that being, of course, operational requirements dictate, and, you know, a very robust always-on fleet, and which speaks to the need for level-three fast chargers that can charge in 30 minutes or less. Those have significant implications for facility design and grid infrastructure that need to be worked out for us to move more, you know, confidently and faster along that pathway for police. That work is underway, as it is in other areas with, for example, the depot modernization plan that's underway to look at facility grid requirements to enable this, this transition to happen. What I'll also say is that we, through successive rounds of federal government funding for EV infrastructure, we have about a quarter of the EV chargers in the, in the capital plan already in place to enable this transition. So approximately 100 of the 400 charging stations that will be required are already in, already in the budget and have some level of cost-sharing funding from the federal government. So I think there's a fair degree of confidence in moving forward, particularly 2024, 2025, in early years of this plan, but certainly more work needed down the road to cite the EV charging that will enable this transition to proceed. We are looking, implementation of this plan as helping to close that gap that I shared in terms of the projected emissions and the corporate target. This would result in approximately 2,000 tonnes of GHG reductions by 2030, if fully implemented, which again, would have, would play a significant role in closing the gap, even more so from that energy-related emissions perspective, but certainly more, more will be needed beyond this plan to fully close that gap. Key conclusions, cost-effectively, the electrification is possible, you know, as early as 2030 across the three fleet groups, longer for police. A proactive strategy of vehicle procurement is recommended, given strong demand and constrained supply, so being proactive and placing pre-orders is recommended, and we're working with the fleet managers on that. And then critically, the electrical capacity assessments, and that goes to Mayor Foster, to your question on the last presentation, this is going to be a key need for us to ensure that we've got the electrical capacity both on the grid side and on the facility side to enable this, and where the grid isn't there yet, investing on the facility side, battery storage, solar, and those sorts of infrastructure to hopefully be able to manage that load without excessive demand on the electrical grid. I think that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Questions in the request box, Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Ian, thank you for this. I'll be a little critical of this report, a number of charts showing that if you place vehicles that burn fossil fuels with batteries, greenhouse gas emissions from that fleet goes down. I'm not sure that, that we needed a series that, that was sort of straightforward. I am curious on the, the case studies that were shown, didn't address some of the things that have happened in the US, to get some, some, some actual numbers, and these all happened to be police, just by happenstance, but California, as far back, I think LAPD 2019, brought some Teslas and others, Ian. Can we in the future get some, you know, some, some real hard information, the experience of those organisations that have adopted this and can show fuel savings, you know, efficiencies in terms of maintenance and whatnot? Is that possible?
Yes, certainly through the Chair to you, Mayor Foster, there are a number, LAPD in New York Police Department as well, have adopted EVs, mainly for their support vehicles, you know, cargo vans for prisoner transport and the like. There currently aren't pursuit-related vehicles available on the market. So some police fleets are using Teslas in, for pursuit applications, but they are not technically pursuit-rated vehicles. So there are some of those coming, 2024, there's the Chevy Blazer, as well as the Ford F-150, that is a pursuit-related veh, rated vehicle, so that transition is happening on the supply side, and certainly we'll see that more on the demand side as well. Police have purchased, started purchasing some battery-electric vehicles, again, cargo vans, as well as a Chevy Bolt for their support vehicle fleet. The transition on the pursuit side is going to take a little longer, again, owing to model availability and the infrastructure requirements, but to your point, I think education, knowledge sharing of fleet experiences in the US and elsewhere, we will be doing that through the Green Fleet Working Group, and to the extent that that work makes its way up to council through, through the council as well.
That's great. I know one of the police departments was talking, saying $2,000 a year on brakes per vehicle.
Oil changes.
I don't know how you spend, and trust me, I know about brakes on vehicles, how you spend $2,000 a year.
And nothing beats the torque of an EV if you need to get up to speed.
Well, yeah. Right. Trust me, I'm a, I'm a fan on that. Have we looked at, and you are speaking, the report does speak to plug-in hybrids, but there, there is a debate going on, the reduced cost of a plug-in hybrid, or some of these, and again, these would be support. They are virtually electric vehicles, you will very seldom use gasoline. Has there been a cost-benefit analysis on that, that this is, you know, perhaps a more efficient way of doing?
So through the Chair to you, that was a key part of the modelling exercise, where we looked at the average daily distance travelled by each vehicle in the fleet, as well as the maximum distance travelled within a given, within that, the dataset that we required, and where a given vehicle's average daily or maximum daily distance could be met within the battery range of a plug-in hybrid, that was the model that was, that is being recommended for adoption, particularly, as you mentioned, to reduce, reduce the upfront capital costs.
Great, thank you. So you know, I am seeing Teslas at the track, not at the track, on the track.
Thank you, councillor Leahy.
Thank you, Chair, through you to Mr McVay. So appreciate that. So I guess my first one, I know you said, no, it's challenging to get police pursuit vehicles, but I know, I know, like, NYPD bought 184 of those Mustang Mach-Es, and they're on the road as pursuit vehicles today, do we not? We have evidence of other US police departments that are using these fully-electric pursuit vehicles that are on the road?
Through the Chair to you, councillor Leahy, at this point, it's really in a pilot basis that I, as I understand it, the police fleets are adopting EVs. The Mach-E, as you mentioned, is not, is not currently, there's not currently a sort of pursuit-related rated model of that, to my understanding. There are, there are police fleets in Canada as well, in Quebec, and even in Atlantic Canada, that have also adopted, you know, a couple of vehicles on a, on a pilot basis to get experience within, within their fleet managers and, and officers. So, yeah, that, we are, we are keeping abreast of that, those developments, and hopefully staying ahead of them.
Okay, no, fair enough. So can we say, as of this year, how many EVs we have in the regional fleet? Like, do we have a number?
I don't have it immediately in front of me, but I'd say it's, I'm going to guess it's probably 10?
Okay, so, and then, so again, looking at your chart, and yeah, I'm fully supportive here, but it's like, looking at these really aggressive numbers, but in, you know, my five years here, we've bought 10 vehicles, so it's like, what is our plan in the next 12 to 24 months to grow that number from 10?
Right, well, that is, that is what the plan is, really, to accelerate that, starting in the next budget year, 2024. There are specific numbers for each fleet within the plan that, that if endorsed, would be, begin to be operationalized through the budget process.
Yeah, no, and fair enough, like, I just, you know, I ask it every year, and I know we're buying the buses, and I know it's in the plan, I just want to see it actually come to reality, so that when we go back to residents, we actually have facts and stuff on the road that's actually working. So again, fully supportive, just always going to continue to ask for those dates until we have numbers, and we can say an X percentage of our fleet has been replaced, and it's not, an ICE engine is actually electric vehicle, so appreciate that, and fully supportive, thank you.
And there will be annual reporting on, on the percentage of fleet that is electric through this corporate climate update report.
Perfect, yeah, no, fully supportive, just want to see more, more purchases, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor McDougal.
Thank, sorry, excuse me, thank you, thank you for the report. Question on, you've selected plug-in hybrids rather than straight hybrids, and just looking, knowing myself, looking at the, some of the larger possibilities in terms of minivans, et cetera, they don't really exist in a plug-in hybrid model. I think there's only one right now out there. It's not particularly competitive, and it doesn't have very good range on the plug-in side. How come we haven't looked at just regular hybrid vehicles as a stop-gap measure until we move to fully plug-in models in that area? Mr Chair?
Yeah, through, through you, Chair, to councillor McDougal, I mean, the, given the technical availability of models and increasing availability of models over the forecast period to 2030, we're anticipating increased availability of cargo vans, minivans and the like, pickups are coming as well, so I think we're really working with Dunskey, who has a sort of model availability timeline and forecast, that they work with the OEMs, the original equipment, the automakers, on. We're feeling confident that the, the range of vehicles that we need for our fleet will be available over the forecast period.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms of, I mean, disruptions in terms of, I'm not thinking of negative disruptions, I'm thinking in terms of positive disruptions, like, if something changes in terms of battery technologies, I'm assuming this plan could be accelerated, is that fair to say? Through Mr Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay, that exhaust request to speak, so I have one that's a little bit different for you. One of the biggest costs for the region is the pumping of water and the electricity that goes to that. Have we looked at putting, or ever thought of, and Canada was a leader in this world may still, in this realm may still be, on inline microhydraulic units to generate electricity within our pumping plants?
So to you, Chair, we are currently undertaking a water and wastewater GHG management strategy with John Prest's team and the environmental services division. That is one of the things that will be considered as part of that plan in terms of cost-effectiveness and, you know, alignment with our, with our existing capital plan. So yes, that is part of what's being considered there.
Okay, it'd be interesting to see how that works, even if it can be used to charge batteries.
But to Mary Simpson's point earlier in the meeting, we don't really have the elevations that require a lot of pumping, which might impact the cost-effectiveness of that.
I'm looking more to our rural projects where we pump water up into tanks and down from tanks.
Right.
That a small microunit might be enough to generate a substantial amount of electricity, so.
Yeah.
So as long as they're looking at it. Members of council, that covers all of the items. Now we'll move, there are no delegations, thank you. There are, is no correspondence, I'm going to move to reports. I can, we can do this, and we can get them all moved at once, if somebody would like to do that. Moved by councillor Pickles, seconded by councillor Leahy, that reports numbers 7.1 to 7.5 are moved. Members of council, polls. Okay, then, seeing none, Mr Clerk, will, all the recommendations are as adopted, we'll call the vote, all those in favour? In opposition? Hearing none, that carries. Members of council, there are no confidential matters. And the last item, councillor Chapman? Thank you. Move for adjournment, seconded by councillor Brenner. Members of council, on adjournment? All those in favour? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. To all the staff in the room, thank you for the great work. Members of council, have a wonderful day and stay safe.